Recording?
Yeah.
Hey, make sure you guys' red's on. Um, we're gonna not quite start yet for the meeting. We're waiting for Dave Kennard to show up. He's running a little bit behind. So we'll start once Dave Kennard.
Hello?
Well, I didn't get this one back. Yeah, we can share it. Maybe it's still on the printer.
Maybe.
Did you get this one? The one with the one nine four.
Yeah, we're just waiting until Dave gets here to get started. He's got some numbers for us and some information.
This one is incorrect, right?
Yeah, that's the first one he sent.
Yeah. I didn't really understand this, um, info he sent us.
I think it was the way it's reading is that if it was fifty cents, we're, no, we're gaining this, this much off of, off of. If we go only twenty-five cents, we're gaining this one.
We're gonna take that off.
Yeah.
Off of that.
Yeah.
We're still a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we still, yeah.
Twenty-five cents. We gained ninety-nine to nine seventy-seven, we gained twenty-two thousand. So if we give zero raise, we're gonna pick up another twenty-two thousand.
Still wouldn't be enough to cover that yet.
No, still gonna be it.
To balance it.
Did anybody catch what the insurance was for employee?
I don't think he knows yet.
Huh?
Roughly seventy thousand.
I mean, last year was twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars per employee. I didn't know. We're over thirty-six now, or do you guys know?
Yeah.
I actually said it didn't have it. Didn't have it yet. Go in the negotiation.
What information is he gonna?
I wanna make sure I understand these salary increase comparisons. Cause I don't think that's taken, I'm assuming, I guess this would just be off the red number. Where we're at.
Mm-hmm, off of that. It was kinda, wasn't clear what that number at the bottom meant. Neil's got a good reasoning on it, but.
I think he's working backwards.
Yeah, must be. The only thing that makes sense.
That's what you would take off from this. I mean, I still, I don't wanna.
Well, we got some out there still.
Seventy-two thousand. Oh, for this one ninety-four. Six ninety-one, red. In the end, no matter what raise we got, still part of that left. One of our choices would be to not put full three hundred and fifty thousand fire engine. Thought we could keep part of that out. Make this number balance.
Only thing we can use it for is for.
Personal service.
Yeah.
We've already, we've already done that, so that, that, that money set aside is the twenty percent that we, we set the order at. We can't use it.
I mean, is there a chance that we can move? And I don't know if that's not the case.
So this is, this is what I came up with today, and I don't know if this is, it's feasible. That's what I'd, I'd like to ask David if these can be done. But if, if this is, if his number's in a way, if we're reading that correctly, at twenty-five cents. So we'd be, still be one seventeen, hundred seventeen, two hundred and forty-one dollars at fifty cents, well, the other way around. At fifty, at twenty-five cents, it's ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. We're still ninety-four thousand dollars short. So, and I don't know, like I said, if this is even possible, but I've just gone through the budgets of what's in, in general. So if you look at City Hall, so City Hall's. So City Hall, so building and structures in the budget, we have budgeted thirty thousand dollars. Um, other supplies, we have budgeted at ten thousand or fifteen thousand. Uh, City Hall, household cleaning, we got it budgeted eighteen-five. So my question is, is can you use edit money to pay that money out of those, out of those funds?
Very good.
Covers. So if you go to edit.
Is there miscellaneous?
Uh-huh. No, miscellaneous is cut out this year. But if you go to edit, and we have City Hall improvements at fifty thousand dollars. Could you not pay if there's any improvements out for City Hall structures or the building that you, could you not use it out of that? So leave it at fifty thousand, which is, we wanna keep edit where it's at, but you would be dropping it thirty thousand there. And if you drop five here, so that's, that's thirty-five thousand. And then if you use the house, household cleaning, which is the line item in the City Hall, you would use, um, support services. So we have twenty-five thousand dollars in that fund. We haven't used any money at all in that fund this year, but they budgeted twenty-five thousand. So it's eighteen-five. And then City Hall consulting fees, you cut ten thousand out of that, and then you use the edit consulting fees. Consulting fees is eighty thousand, and we've used forty-nine, there's thirty remaining. So you'd use maybe ten thousand there. And then for our City Council, consulting fees would be the same thing. We cut, we, we would leave, um, it's budgeted fifty-one.
Our treasures guy, consulting fees too.
Yeah, two thousand. So if you take the, if you, if you cut forty thousand from our consulting fees and leave it at eleven thousand, which we used fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six. So the difference, but use the edit, edit consulting fees for that, that's a total of a hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't know if he has our, in the new, in the new budget that we got for today, he doesn't have the consulting in there, does he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that should be in, that should be in the numbers that he gave us though, at the end, which the last numbers he gave us was. Last numbers he gave us for City Council. Fifty-four twenty, so that may, that may not be including anything but just salaries and that, and insurance and all that, I don't know.
Well, I don't know about that, of course, what he's put in there for ours. It's gotta be forty thousand, but that, that's not. The consulting is where we need to, I mean, we, we didn't use a lot of, a lot of that was other consulting that David used, but we had taken out from the council.
Yeah.
That it was dealing with budget issues, but we weren't using his, and plus, we can, we can cut some of those other consultings or cut ours, but using it from. And I think that, I don't think we knew the cleaning supply. I think the cleaning, we probably would throw that into the edit. That's a contract.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, we, I mean, we have the, in the edit, we have that, that line for support services, because that's what it would be. And we don't really use, we didn't use.
Something we're having every year. I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of almost like a salary, a situation I would wanna really put into edit. That's gonna be a reoccurring thing as far as cleaning this up.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't wanna do that, but I think we could probably do.
So even if you.
The improvement.
Even if you do that. That still takes us to. Eighty-five thousand.
No bouncing your step coming in here? All right, we are, we are live. We've just been waiting kinda for you to kinda come in. We had a couple of questions, a couple of things we wanted to kinda run by you, and a couple of clarifications. Some things, so we are live. All right, um, I guess, first of all, starting off with the, the salary increase.
We do a roll call? David need to do a roll call.
You've already started me.
We didn't do a roll call.
Started me, so you, I'm not gonna. I'm not doing roll call after me, so go ahead.
All right, so everybody's here. Um, taking a look here at the salary increase from looking at the salaries, obviously, we found out that, um, the dollar was not gonna work. Uh, we also had to take a look here at fifty cents and twenty-five cents. So, um, from looking at the salary increase, the fifty cents is that the seventy-seven thousand dollars that we would save?
Yeah.
If we did that from what we thought was a hundred and forty, but now we're down into the red at one ninety.
One ninety-four.
I forgot about you guys.
So when you put that.
Sorry!
When you put that City Council number, is that just salaries and, and personal services?
That's actually the, from the bottom of the budget.
Okay.
I mean, that's just, I just took the difference from the bottom of the budget. Does that make sense? That's not salaries, that's, it's taking the dollar out, putting fifty cents and quarter in, and that's what the bottom line would be for all those.
That includes first, and everything else?
Huh?
Does that include first?
So it's insane.
Well, about the only thing that.
So when you put in the council, what does that include?
Your salaries and your insurance and your, mm, FICA Medicaid or.
It doesn't add the consulting fees in that that we.
And you put consulting fees in the City Council as if there's any extra.
Extra.
That's what, I'm sorry. Yeah, to answer that, yeah, the only thing goes, usually go in there, Neil, is if there's any balance in general into the budget here.
Gotcha.
We stick it in there, cause you guys control the budget, so that way it's not in somebody else's budget.
So that just down even further.
I'm, I'm assuming you probably didn't get a chance to talk with Paige today, or?
Nothing we can, she can do for us. I mean. I mean, it's, it is what it is. Your revenue's gonna be what it is, and she can't, you know, can't give us any revenue. You know, we talked about last year, it's when we, when the fire territory left, and we took our own fire department, that, that was gonna take a big hit, and then revenue just took a big hit.
So one of my questions before you got here was, um, so City Hall, in the City Hall budget, we have building and structures budgeted at thirty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
So.
What number you're looking at? You were looking at?
Building and structure. City Hall, um.
Uh, two twenty?
Two twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, if we cut that, that thirty thousand out, can that be paid out of edit consulting fees?
Not building and structure, not.
Not building and structure, I'm not, 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 yeah, not consulting fees, but hang on a second, let me find here. Can it be paid out of? City Hall improvements. We have fifty thousand budgeted at City Hall improvements. We didn't spend any as, as of this, this year, can we, can it be paid out of that?
Number's that, I'm.
Uh, number three oh seven, the second one, second line.
Oh, that's why, it's cause it was too far down. Can be, yeah.
So then my other question, and I don't know, like I said, cause this is a, it's a contractor of your, but, so like in City Hall, we have household cleanings at eighteen-five. Can that be paid out of edit support services?
Anything can be paid out of edit, if that's what you guys heard, everybody's so bizarre.
I try and be careful as far as on that, that service, is that cleaning, is that kind of a yearly salary situation, or is that just a contract?
But it's year to year. It's just a one-year agreement.
You don't know what edit's gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, that's another thing, edit's gonna go away in twenty twenty-eight, so.
So, I mean.
Yeah, anything, anything that can be taken out of your normal budget can be taken out of it.
I mean, if, if, I mean, if.
It's gonna go gone.
If we choose to, if we choose to balance it at, I mean, to get as close to zero as possible, I mean, that's the only, I mean, I didn't see hardly any other place in, in any of those funds you could pay.
I know this is gonna be bad coming out, but you won't balance it unless you give no raise. You can't get a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars out of it, and you can't squeeze it out of the rest. I mean, total, you know, best, cause especially if you take the five forty out of edit, you only got five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So you gotta pay the bond, the bond's not, you know, it's just it. The new water meters, cause unfortunately, we paid for the John's control water meters, and they're paid off, but now we're at the new ones. I'm just talking kinda line by line. And consulting fees, it's gonna be that high because. Cause of everything that's going on. I mean, we're gonna spend it this year, miscellaneous will not be there, as you can see, cause there's not gonna be any extra money.
Right.
So I was just estimating, Dave, um, based on the difference between a fifty cent raise and a twenty-five cent raise. The difference between those two down at the bottom is twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five, or twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
So if we give zero raise, we can add twenty-two, two ninety-five to ninety-nine, seven forty-four.
You're, you're gonna add a lot more than that, we, we've already beat that, I mean, I had that number the other night. I've already erased, we've gone back and forth so many times, I didn't know where we. You'll save, if you go back to your twenty-five, twenty twenty-five salary, you're just, you'll save a lot of them, but if that's.
That's zero raise, right?
Yeah, that's a zero raise, yeah.
How much money will we save?
I, I had that on the other night, and I've, I, I've got rid of it by now. Well, we should've kept our figures, I don't, I can't. You just, just figure police and fire, and that's where your biggest money is, and. If you can go from one eleven fifty-five, you're gonna save, you know, hundred, two hundred, three, four hundred thousand dollars in police and theirs, and probably that much in fire. Not that many, cause they don't have that many people. So if that's what you wanna do. We talked about that for two days, and then we just kinda went on thinking we're not gonna do that, and then we went twenty twenty-five, twenty-five or fifty, and now we're going back to zero. I don't. I think we need to get somewhere tonight, because this has to be put in Gateway, and it has to be published, and it has to be, you know, we got timelines coming on. It has to be submitted to Gateway and, and approved by September twenty-sixth, by DLGF.
What, what's the date on that?
September twenty-sixth, has to be in Gateway and approved by DLGF by September twenty-sixth. And with all the lit changes we're making, it's gonna take a while. Then we'll have our public hearing on the sixth, and our adoption on the twentieth.
If we just keep salaries on, just on police alone, at, at where they're at now, current, two thousand twenty-five, and not at zero, so that's eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then perf's another eleven thousand, so that's ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five.
I thought it was ninety-something thousand from just thinking.
Yeah.
And the fire was gonna be twenty-something thousand, I don't think I kept that paper, but I might have, but. I mean, now you're gonna, you'll probably make, well, then that's your two biggest, you won't make up that other hundred thousand. Between the police and the fire, you might get half, well, maybe, half of that negative. But again, I mean, if you give, if you take all your union workers and give them a fifty cent raise, you're not talking twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right. The fire's not in the general, so it's not really affecting what we're.
So, you know, the, the biggest, the two biggest hits are police and fire, cause they got the biggest salaries and the biggest amount of people. They got longevity, I mean, they got a lot of stuff in there.
That would, that would get us there, right?
Get us closer.
Gets close.
And if we could throw out that building instructor from the City Hall, that would take thirty thousand out.
I hate to say it, guys, but I think that's what we're gonna do. Do zero.
I mean. I'm always a financial person, and I think that's where you're at. I don't want that as a morale issue, I mean, it's gonna be bad, but you don't know what's gonna happen next year either. And you're gonna finish this year probably close to eight hundred thousand dollars in the hole, from your beginning cash to your end cash.
So in essence, this year wasn't balanced either.
Never, I mean, the general was balanced in the beginning, but it never ends in balance. By March or April, it's, it's not balanced. I don't like to say that, but. But it doesn't, it never ends up at the end of the year being balanced. You always have to have additional appropriations, or, or move money from one to the other to get it there. Yes, in the beginning, it can be balanced on paper, but, which is a good place to start, but it never ends where we start. Signs of times, and just what happens, just happens, things happen. But if there is no raises coming, then I'd make sure that nobody gets hired any, because that's, your, your morale's just gonna be horrible. Which, it, that may be what it's gonna be.
Well, I think we need to do that, just to protect the people that we got working now, or we'll be looking at a layoff.
To me, that's how we need to, they, we and they need to look at it, because we're not taking anything away from them. You know what I mean? We're not taking any benefits from them, and they got a steady job, but whether they'll look at it like that, I don't know. We got a pretty good group of people now, I think.
Seem to have.
You know, I don't, you can't tell, but as, if you're gonna be financially sound, you know you're taking eight hundred thousand dollar hit this year out of your general. And if you take, you know, if you give it and you lose another two hundred thousand every year, you're gonna, in, you know, five, six years, your surplus is gonna run, cause we never know what the tax is gonna do. And you're, and that's not even counting the four hundred thousand that we're using out of lit. Think if we didn't have that, and we had to take that back in the budget. That, I mean, that just, it just doesn't, it just gets worse for worse as I talk, I guess. Quiet, because, you know, I mean, you're thinking, and then again, and everybody thinks I'm a naysayer, but I, I'm just telling the truth. When that, when edit goes away, and we got that half a million dollar bond in there to twenty-three, thirty-three, where's that coming? It ain't gonna get it.
Well, they're saying we're gonna have the lit tax, and you know, Paige told us that the lit tax looked like it would equal, but I don't think there's any way that that's gonna happen.
We are, we're all in that agreement, and there, that's just, you're thinking twenty twenty-eight, we're estimating twenty twenty-eight. I mean, you still got twenty twenty-six session and twenty twenty-seven session, it could all, it could all change again next year. This time again, next year, we could be looking at a whole next ballgame. I think you gotta deal with twenty twenty-six the best you can right now. That's my opinion.
Hundred percent agree on that.
I don't like it, nobody on this board probably likes it, probably the worst thing you've ever had to do, but.
I don't think you're a naysayer, Dave.
I'm not a naysayer, I'm just saying, everybody always says I'm negative, well, when you're a financial person, you're gonna be negative.
You're just.
I'd like to give everybody if I'd all raised.
This year, you're just.
I'd like to give everybody all they could get, but it's just not there.
This year, you're just telling the truth.
I try to tell the truth every year, but unfortunately, we don't know the truth till today, till right now, you're finding.
And we still don't know the truth.
And we, and you're correct, you will never, the truth is, in government, unfortunately, you never know, because the tax, they cannot pay their taxes, they could decide something else in twenty twenty-six session, they could decide something, they could all flip-flop a bunch. You know, we were all, and we did work hard to get that safety tax, I mean, the city pushed hard to get it, pushed the county hard to get it, but, you know, it's just everything else. They give it and they take it away, and they took it away. And it's gonna help you this year and next year, but you're, we're gonna figure out something for the future, hopefully, it will come back. That's my, that's my, my Christmas list, the twenty twenty-six session reinstates that.
Well, and the safety tax, as it was written coming up, leaves out police, and I know there was talk about, even Chief Blue mentioned the, being at a meeting, and they're talking, you know, how, how can they leave that entity out? Safety, EMS, fire.
Saying the same thing like Greg was trying to say, yeah.
They need to all be in there.
That.
That comes from the state, the county.
FOP is gonna be, and they got, they got some really good.
Lobbyists.
Lobbyers up there, you know they're gonna get into that piece of, they're not gonna be left that. State police, the Sheriff's Association, they're gonna be. The state police, the Sheriff's Association, they're gonna be right in there getting after their lobbyists and their state centers to. Not let them be out. That's just our opinion.
Yep.
Do we need a motion to take that money that Neil was talking about? The thirty thousand?
Not a motion, we're just gonna, not a motion, we're just gonna move the, I mean.
Need a motion to move the money?
No, because the money's not there yet. There's, I mean, all we gotta do is, I mean.
You just gotta tell me what you wanna do and where you wanna move it, and then I'll, we'll just put it in.
So.
You have to, you have to submit it to DLGF and see if they'll, which they will, because you got nine million dollars in your general.
So, this is my figures so far, I mean, so if we take zero raises, or, and I'm not putting the fire in there because it's its own budget, so it'll just drop that whatever, so police would be ninety one thousand two thirty five, that's salaries in perf. If we do the building structures out of edit, that's thirty thousand. If, if we do the cleaning, which, even if we just do it for this, for this year, it's eighteen thousand five hundred, uh, twenty two forty out of the, the clerks and, um. Four thousand one hundred and sixty out of. Oh, that would, let me add this up real quick. We're getting closer.
Well, they started, they started. That's fine. Whatever we decide, we gotta get, I wanna be done.
So that takes us to a hundred, hundred and forty six thousand one thirty five. So you minus that from the one ninety six. Roughly forty eight thousand, we're still short.
By the way, Andrea Howden made kudos today. Only said one bad word.
He's picking so much improvement.
She thought I did very, very well. What'd you say, Neil, I'm sorry, I'll pay attention.
Forty eight thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars is what we're, still be short, if we take those others out, so that's, that's how far off we are from it at zero.
Then you're just, you're just, we're in general.
Yeah, that's just work in general. That's police.
That's what you gotta do.
Yeah. But that's taking two of the line items and paying it out of edit, if that's what we choose to do. You can.
Now, keep, you know, we gotta.
I mean, you can, you can continue, I mean, like you said, if, if it's eligible to take, you know, consulting fees out of that, we could drop that more, but like you said, it's probably gonna, it's all gonna come out of the general anyway, so is it really gonna matter if we?
I mean, you can cut it, and, and then in two months, you're gonna have to give it back.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, if we, and, and. If we wanna get it to zero, we probably could get it to zero by.
We're gonna get to zero, but last year, we weren't at zero either.
I know.
So I say, we, I think we should have another meeting. And we'll get all of our forms filled out with zero raise. I put that in. And we ended up moving that thirty thousand out of building structures. That for edit, and then. Household and laundry, I mean, I mean, I know you looked at doing that, too, we're down to where your numbers are right now, is what you said, close to fifty thousand, forty thousand. And that moves that over, I mean, I hate to kind of move that over to edit type of situation that needs to stay in, like the general budget, because that's. Cleaning City Hall, but.
We can.
Maybe we can look at where for something else.
You can move wherever you wanna move, but you guys still remember you used almost half a million dollars in lit.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, in all, in all reality, if, if, if it's not zero, it's, it's. It's not zero, because we're gonna, at the end of the year, we're not gonna be at zero anyway.
I thought Dave said he needed an answer.
I think. I mean, the forms have to be filled out, because I have to fill them out and send them back to Philly, so they can.
Well, this would get pretty much almost everything filled out, is where we're at, I mean, I think we're on, I mean, I don't know if we're on, on this zero raise, but I mean, I mean, I said that yesterday, that, I thought that's where we're at.
They're all sitting there looking, all you gotta do is ask them.
I mean, do we, we don't need a motion, or, or, just, I mean, I, I, as much as I would.
You can't make any votes tonight.
As much as I hate to, to do it, and we've said it, all, all of us have said it, I mean, I don't see any other, I don't see any other way to get us even halfway close to where we need to be at. With, without going no raise.
I agree, no raise. We don't need to beat it. Everybody just needs to say their opinion.
I'm just not, I'm not giving my end.
It's on, it's on bacon, you're not, you're not a police officer.
What about you, Dan? They probably know where I live.
No. What's your opinion on it?
On the raise? We don't have a choice. I mean. Now, I'm not against giving a stipend later on, if David finds something where we made a mistake.
Yeah, I would do that.
I mean. If, for some reason.
The muddy tree starts falling.
Yeah, Paige finds something that she always look.
Say that, we, we go with.
And then I, then, the only other thing I wanted, with that, I wanna make sure that you're all. On the same page, that when people start bringing you in salary ordinance changes, that we're, we're gonna change this person's title, and they're gonna be entitled to this, and this, and this, to get them extra money, then I wanna make sure you're gonna stand behind and say no to that. Because that's what's, that's probably what's. Now, I'm just talking in your, your civil and your union.
Yep.
Because.
That's what it is this year, no reason.
What happens, it's like they get it somewhere else.
Well, a lot of times that's done, I know, because if we don't give a stipend to a current employee, then we have to hire that out.
Well, I'm not saying a stipend, I agree with the contract, that if you're gonna pay, like, some signer or something like that.
There you go.
I'm just not saying, like, okay, we're gonna say this person all of a sudden is gonna have this title, and that title, and the salary order's gonna be worth this amount of money, and they're gonna get a dollar raise. Just, I don't, you know, just like.
Would that be a new position, and I don't think we want any new position.
It's not fair to give zero raises, and then people start giving you salary ordinance changes and title changes to get.
More money.
More money.
Can you legally do that, though, if, if, let's just say.
They can't change, they can't change salary orders, as you say, yeah.
No, I know, what I'm saying is, let's say firefighter, that's a sergeant, re- retires or resigns, and they need to fill a sergeant's position, and they would move a person up, and they, and by the contract, salary ordinance, that person makes that, that much money.
Yeah, they'll do it because of the rank.
But do we not have to pay that, because we've already, we've already set the salaries of what?
Yeah, because just what happens when we went from fire territory to fire department, you have to have three captains, although, some of those didn't have the years or experience, two of them did, one of them didn't. And they got a, that was a whopper. You know, a major jump. And then what happens, too, then you get people like that, and if they're short help, you gotta hire these people, while, you know, still on a probationary firefighter or regular firefighter job, two or three dollars. This way. But I just don't want you, I want you to be aware of that, I don't want you to start creating positions.
Yeah, no, I get, I agree to that, I agree, but.
Because that wouldn't really, you talk about bad morale. They have to come to you anyway. You have to prove it, and you have to. You have to prove the salary.
Stay on track, stay on track here for the number, we all, we know.
So I'm, I'm sitting here thinking that what you're saying is no raises. Moving two items from. From the City Hall to edit for this year.
Well, edit's, it's already in it.
They're already, it's already budgeted in edit, we would just pay out of those, those lines.
Say that again?
So.
Insulting.
We are, we are gaining money, you would be taking the thirty thousand dollars out of City Hall building structures, and you'd be paying that thirty thousand out, out of the, the.
You're taking out City Hall and put it, paying it out.
Yeah. Yeah.
For now.
For now.
They're both kind of generalized.
Yeah, they're all the same, but I'm. Yeah.
I didn't get to give my opinion. But, uh. The job of this board. When we, Jim and myself, when you guys came on, is to be physically responsible, number one. And this is hard, a hard decision to make as far as the raises, but, uh, when did we not give one, Dave, you remember what year that was?
I, as, when I was here, you always gave one.
One year we did.
I don't know when.
But anyway.
I really don't, Dan.
That's fine. We've gotta do what is good for paying bills. That's where we're at, that's first. And, uh, nobody's losing a job, which is, you know, we're trying to keep that under our hats, too. And we've done that, so, and, and we're looking long term, although we're doing things good for, for, for this, for this budget, but we have also looked into the future, because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. So it, it is a hard decision on, on the raise part of it, but I think we're making the right decision.
Hard one, but I think it's financial.
No question. And on that, I have to go. Be that.
You be that way, Dan.
You guys need me for anything, you got my phone.
So Dave, can we, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of if in our books when we do this no raise, and then we go back to last year's salary, which. And then we could have brand new sheet to sit there and.
I'll fix new sheets and send them. That makes sense, I wouldn't schedule another meeting, so. So you think. I think you could work it out without it. I mean, I'm two weeks probably, it's gonna. Put it in gateway. All the changes to the lit.
Could it be brought up in Monday's meeting, maybe, or?
I just know we don't have a lot of time, and, I mean, I don't, if we need to make any other cuts, it, it's hard to try to look at a cut whenever we don't have all the numbers. Where we need to be.
We have all the numbers, we can, we can plug them in right now, if we have to.
I feel confident that Dave will do it, and we don't need to worry about it unless he tells us there's a problem.
If it don't come out the way.
We shouldn't schedule a meeting unless Dave says we got a problem.
Remember, these are just estimates, these are just, these are just a budget, they can, they're gonna change, they're gonna change January second. And I, you're not gonna get to zero. I mean, you can get to zero, I'll get you to zero if that's what you want, but it's not, January second, it's not gonna be zero. There's just no extra money to play with, I mean, look at what we had in edit, look what we had in your guys' consultant. I mean, we started general last year, probably ninety thousand dollars with extra money.
So, Dan, Dan does have a question, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, understand how that works, though.
The, the payment in lieu of taxes, you said it hasn't been raised since two thousand sixteen. And property taxes have went up every year, so maybe, I know, then they probably didn't have the extra money. To pay, and I don't know that both of them are paying their fair share.
Well, that's just sewer and water, and it just gets paid out sewer and water and goes right in, in general, and it's not in your budget, it just goes in the bank, goes in the bank. It's not, you won't see that in your budget.
But you see it on your form, you see it on your, your Form Three or whatever, I mean, you see it on your estimated income, correct, that you had to give them. Going into general?
Well, she knows it, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you could raise it and get a little.
I mean, if you, if you raise it up a little, then that.
But then you're taking.
We may do that next year. I guess.
They're paying their fair share, because at, at one time, it was all coming out of. Water. I don't. And Brad.
Sounds right.
Sewer, water, sixteen. He shared it between sewer and water, and I don't think they're paying it fair, water's paying more than sewer, one way or the other. Not at equal. And it's not.
It's three hundred and eleven thousand. Forty two.
That probably is, probably thirty thousand, thirty thousand, or twenty nine, eight eighty two a month. It's thirty some, it's barely over thirty thousand. As payment of the taxes.
So you guys are feeling like we don't need to have another meeting, then, and you guys are good with plugging and checking these numbers, and then?
I don't think everybody's pretty sure about the number.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with, with just plugging and going, because, I mean.
I'll plug them in, in these forms, send them to you, and if you have questions or anything, then let me know, or we'll all get, we don't have to get together, but purely between the emails, we can figure out if that's what you really want. I mean, biggest thing is no raises. And you're just changing two other numbers. So that's, that's pretty.
You just be careful when you respond, you're responding in, not reply to all, you can't have meetings, emails. Individually, right?
I can send it out, just don't respond at all.
Yeah, don't hit reply.
Don't reply all.
Don't hit reply all.
When, when, when do you think you could probably get?
I don't know, depends on, just like today, I thought I'd have that number to you first thing in the morning, but I got called in another hour and a half meeting. My schedule is everybody's desire.
I know, I kept looking, eight thirty, nine, nine thirty, I'm thinking, what time does he come to work anyhow?
Eight o'clock, I was here at eight o'clock, Mister McIntosh, but then I was duly notified that I needed to be in a meeting at nine forty five.
I thought you were still at Dairy Queen.
Well, I'd like to have been. But I wasn't, I'm a, and we.
All right, so we all in a agreeance with everything like it going on, so we're just gonna go ahead and do the plug and chug, and then we'll keep in contact with no raises, moving those two items off of City Hall. Eventually get those.
Yep.
We'll discuss that.
Agree.
All right, make a motion to join the twenty twenty six budget meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, again.
Second, I don't know who it was.
It was Dan.
All those in favor?